Good morning, everyone. I think we can kind of settle. I think we're ready to start. Wonderful. It's nine o'clock, so I'm going to go ahead and call to order this November 13th, 2024 meeting of the Monterey County Planning Commission. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Gonzalez to lead us in the pledge, please. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Getzelman.
Here.
Commissioner Work.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza. Commissioner Monsalve.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw. Absent. Commissioner Gomez.
Here.
Commissioner Deal.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Daniels.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is Commissioner Shaw around? I'm not sure. I just thought maybe she had seen her truck.
There's some kind of parking problem.
Oh.
Our spots were all full, and I circled every parking lot, and they were all full. So she might be out there circling.
Okay. I will make a note. We hope she makes it. Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask our secretary to read the instructions for participating remotely. I know most of us know how to use Zoom, but let's just be sure. Ms. Kinga?
Yes, thank you. So, good morning. To participate during public comment on the Zoom platform, you can raise your hand by opening the reactions bottom of your reactions at the bottom of your screen and clicking on the raise hand icon. On a mobile or landline, you can raise and lower your hand by pressing star nine. Another way you can participate is by sending an email to PCHearingComments@countyofmonterey.gov. This email address can also be found on the agenda for today's meeting. Staff are monitoring that email in real time, so if you have a question, comment, or a document, staff will do our best to respond in real time during the meeting. This does not, however, guarantee it will be done once the meeting has begun. Members of the public who wish to comment will be granted permission by the meeting clerk to unmute themselves during the public comment section of each agenda item, once the chairperson acknowledges them to speak. We do ask that you keep yourself muted unless you are presenting. To mute yourself on the Zoom platform, there is a mute button at the bottom of the screen that looks like a microphone. To mute or unmute yourself on a mobile or landline, press star six.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to ask the clerk just to remind us, I believe we have a new interpretation program. It's not running yet. Okay, we're working on one for those listening at home, and we're very hopeful that we'll have more available interpretation services in the very near future. So cross your fingers for that. This is a time set aside for members of the public to comment on items that are not on today's agenda but which are under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Is there anybody here in the chambers who would like to do that? For three minutes, if you want to. I don't see anybody rushing forward, so we're going to go ahead and look online. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have Margie Kay.
Ms. Kay, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I just want to say I thank you all, the Planning Commission. I know you're volunteers. I know you work hard at what you do. I don't always agree with your decisions, but I do appreciate all the work you do. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Is there anybody in the world who agrees with anybody else's opinions all the time? Madam Clerk?
We have Call-In User One.
Call-In User One, you have the floor and three minutes. If you'd care to state your name for the record, that would be great.
Yes, good morning. This is Jeannie Ford calling, and I want to thank you for making this available for people on Zoom, and thank you also for being here today. I had two quick questions, or not questions, but yeah, maybe questions, statements and questions about the Big Sur land use area. One of them is about, I'm wondering if there's been a moratorium placed on any new visitor serving units. I know that there's been a continuing confusion about what the definition is, you know, with the whole rustic campsite, et cetera. And I'm hoping that there is a moratorium placed on allowing of any new visitor serving units until that has been really addressed with the Big Sur Chamber, the Big Sur community, and the Planning Department, et cetera. And then my second comment slash question is, I understand that there are still a number of short-term rentals that are being allowed to continue, and that Monterey County is really not enforcing the ban on short-term rentals in the Big Sur area, even though some of these short-term rentals are very obviously advertising on Airbnb and other web and other advertising platforms. And I just want to state for the record that I really feel that this is an important thing for the Monterey County to enforce. I know there's a lot of tax revenue, but we really do need to keep the rules going, and it places an unfair, you know, for people who have a lot of money and are renting these short-term rentals and get these big fines and just don't ever do anything versus the small people who have stopped because they can't afford the enforcement penalties, et cetera. So those are two statements. I'm wondering if it's possible for you to address those and let me know if there's any activity on either one of those points, a moratorium or enforcing the short-term rental ban?
We can't actually engage in conversation on items that are not on the agenda, but I do believe that our secretary may be able to inform us about scheduling matters, and we have some of those items that are coming forward on schedule. I think Ms. Barretti might be best placed to do that.
Yeah, I think you through the chair.
Wonderful, well, thank you.
Melanie Barretti with the Housing Community Development Department. I did just want to respond with regards to your inquiry about moratorium for new visitor serving units in the Big Sur land use area. The Planning Commission has made a referral to staff for us to come back and discuss the process and what that process would look like if it were something the county were to consider. I've actually been working with staff, and we're hoping to get that scheduled to come before a brief report to come before the Planning Commission in January, likely the second meeting in January, but we don't have a firm date yet.
And Ms. Barretti, the question about short-term rentals is also a kind of a scheduling question. Could you just address the process around that for the caller?
Sure, thank you, yes. So with regard to short-term or vacation rentals, so at this time, we are in the coastal zone waiting to get our updated regulations certified by California Coastal Commission. The Board of Supervisors did take action on those, and they are coastal regulations for vacation rentals have been forwarded to Coastal Commission, and we do anticipate, based on California Coastal Commission staff input, that they will be bringing our regulations before the Coastal Commission during the first quarter of 2025. We don't have a set meeting date yet, but we do anticipate that hopefully in the first quarter of 2025, and then depending on if the Coastal Commission supports as-is and is certified, then we would begin the rollout in the coastal zone.
Thank you, much appreciated. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else waiting to comment? I don't see anybody.
No, we do not have any additional emails or hands up on Zoom.
Very well. That being the case, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the agenda and ask the clerk if there are any agenda additions, deletions, or corrections.
For the record, we received and distributed additional correspondence for Agenda Item Number One, REF 240016, Coastal Zone Updated Accessory Dwelling Units and Junior Accessory Dwelling Regulations. Agenda Item Number Two, PLN 210174, Myri Arvid. Agenda Item Number Three, PLN 190439, Yan Shi and Sun Ying.
Thank you. And for those in the chambers, those will be available on the front of the audience place on the desk over there, should you want to take a look at those if you don't have them already. All right. Now is the time for commissioners to make comments, requests, and referrals. Commissioners? Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you. I have one, just a question, actually, that has to do with something that came through my inbox yesterday, and I'm just curious if perhaps at the end of the meeting, Public Works might be able to address, which is the timeline and the signage on Carmel Valley Road for the construction project, and whether or not it is being pushed into December and perhaps a way to improve signage so it doesn't indicate that the road is actually under construction for all that period of time because the businesses are being impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners, comments, requests, or referrals? Seeing none, I saw staff taking a note, so I'm assuming they're on it. I do see a hand up, Madam Clerk. Do we know what that's about?
Her hand went up and down during public comment, so, and it came back up after. Did you want to?
Let's reopen public comment to just make sure that Jessica A. is allowed to speak if she wishes to do so.
Thank you so much, and I'm so sorry. I'm having difficulty with my phone, and I'd like to apologize for that. But I'd like to thank you for all the hard work that you put in, and, you know, this is, this is a very important position and important job that you all do, and you are appreciated. And, you know, I don't know if that is ever relayed over, and it should be, because we are really grateful to have you all serve our community. And happy holidays. We know that we won't see each other for a while, but also a reminder that we live in a beautiful community, in a beautiful area, and I just want to make a point that kindness in this area, from my experience, is in abundance. So I am very grateful to live in this area with such a wonderful community, and I just want to thank you for shaping that community and the resources that allows us to live together in harmony. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and reclose the public comment period once more, once more, and assuming that we've gotten everyone now. Madam Clerk, do we know? We think we've gotten everybody now.
Yes, Call-In User One raised their hand again, but they already spoke.
They already spoke, okay. So we only allow one bite at the apple during this period. There will always be an opportunity to comment on each agenda item as it comes forward. So, that being the case, I think we're down to scheduled matters, and the first of the, we have no consent items, I just want to note for the record. The first of our scheduled matters is REF 240016, the Coastal Zone Updated Accessory Dwelling Unit Recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And I think Mr. Sanchez, are you going to lead our discussion for that? I'm going to turn it over to staff for their presentation.
Good morning, Chair Deo, Planning Commissioners. My name is Edgar Sanchez. I am the project planner for coastal ADU regulation updates under REF 240016. We're bringing back this item today as a continuation from the September 25th, 2024 Notice Planning Commission meeting. At that meeting, staff received guidance to continue working with the Coastal Commission staff to address a few concerns they had regarding the water efficiency regulations as well as clarifying the permitting process for ADUs and JADUs that might be exempt from a coastal permit. The Commission didn't raise any other developments, concerns with the development standards at the time, so today's presentation will briefly recap the proposed development standards with a particular focus on the coastal commission areas of concern. The preparation, adoption, amendment, and implementation of local ADU and JADU ordinances must follow the state government code. For this update, our approach has been to align these regulations with both state housing law and the Coastal Act, with the goal of protecting coastal resources while also reducing obstacles to building ADUs and JADUs, and ultimately supporting a more affordable-by-design housing along the coast. So I want to provide some distinctions between the two unit types. For ADUs, these units can be up to 1,200 square feet. They can be attached, detached, and converted from existing structures. These units must have independent facilities for cooking, sanitation, and sleeping, and they should not have an internal circulation with the main residence. There is no owner occupancy requirement and no deed restriction placed on these units. For junior accessory dwelling units or JADUs, these units can be up to 500 square feet. They're fully contained within the walls of a single-family dwelling, and they may share bathroom and central systems, but they must have independent efficiency. So they may have internal circulation with the main residence, and there is owner occupancy requirements, meaning the owner must reside on the lot, either the JADU or the main residence, and these units are deed restricted. So in addition to the updated definitions, the state legislation updated, other components related to the development of ADUs, which include revised development standards such as height allowances, size requirements, and setbacks when constructing an ADU. ADUs cannot be precluded based on lot size, parcel density, or unit cap requirements, and ADUs will not be allowed to be used as vacation rentals with a 31-day rental period. ADUs cannot be sold separately. State law provides criteria for when these units can be sold included in the ordinance. Most notably, the ADU or the primary dwelling has to have been built or developed by a qualified nonprofit corporation. So for newly constructed ADUs of up to 800 square feet, the state is making it a point that whenever lot coverage, floor area ratio, or front setback requirements preclude an ADU up to 800 square feet, these development standards can be waived to allow for the ADU. ADU applications cannot be denied due to the correction of non-conforming zoning conditions, building code violations, or unpermitted structures on a property that do not present a threat to health and safety and are not affected by the construction of an ADU or a JADU. And according to the new state implementing zoning law, the permitting agency must approve or deny the application to create an ADU or a JADU within 60 days from the date that the agency receives a completed application, provided that there is already an existing single-family or a multiple-family dwelling on the lot. So for the county-specific regulations, ADUs and JADUs will be allowed in zoning areas of the county where existing zoning allows for residential uses such as single-family or multiple-family dwellings. A maximum unit size has been established for both attached and detached ADUs that vary by the land use plans. And additionally, there may be the requirement for a design approval permit in certain coastal areas for the protection of the scenic resources. Under state planning and zoning law, local agencies can set parking standards for ADUs and JADUs to prevent issues with public access in high-demand areas. County staff have collaborated with the Coastal Commission staff to map out sections of the Carmel Point. These mapped areas shown in the green have a high visitor demand These mapped areas shown in the green have a high visitor demand and limited on-street parking, which could be impacted if ADU parking spills onto public roads. In these green areas, ADUs will be required one off-street parking space to make sure that public access isn't being negatively affected. Outside of the designated areas, ADUs will not need off-street parking. Additionally, in response to the Coastal Commission's feedback, we've expanded the map to include extra parcels that they have recommended, which are highlighted in the red box. The second area of concern for the Coastal Commission staff was regarding exempt ADUs. In the previous proposal, county staff had recommended amending Monterey County Code 2070-120, which outlines exemptions to a coastal development permit. To add language specifying that certain ADUs would be exempt from a coastal permit unless they met certain conditions that would remove this exemption. These exempt ADUs included attached and detached ADUs under 1,000 square feet, as well as conversions of existing space to ADUs and JDUs. However, Coastal Commission staff found that the proposed exemption language in the Monterey County Code 2070-120 did not align with the specific requirements of California Code of Regulation Section 13250, the regulation that serves as a basis for these exemptions. After discussions, county staff and Coastal Commission staff agreed that the best solution would be to reference the California Code of Regulation Section 13250 externally in the ordinance. This approach allows for the ADU-related exemptions to remain consistent with the current regulations while also giving flexibility as a Coastal Commission and state HCD are working together on potential updates that may allow for more permissive regulations in the future. So the updated ordinance will continue to establish a three-tier approval process for ADUs based on their level of impact. In the first tier, certain ADUs may be exempt from needing a coastal permit if they meet the requirements of the local coastal program and are among the unit types specified in California Code of Regulation Section 13250. These unit types include JDUs, attached ADUs, and ADUs created from converting habitable existing space. In the second tier, ADUs that do not meet the California Code of Regulation 13250 will require a coastal administrative permit. Finally, in addition to these tiers, a full coastal development permit may be required if the project includes elements that trigger a permit under the sections of Monterey County Code and California Code of Regulation 13250. There are several zoning permit triggers in place to protect coastal resources, and these ADU exemptions will not alter these protections. Not going into the last area of concern from the last hearing, the North County Water Regulations. As previously proposed, staff felt that the water conservation measures were inadequate in and of themselves to offset increased water usage, and that would be associated with ADUs and JDUs. And working to come to an agreement, further refinement of the water conservation measures were incorporated as a part of the updated proposal to ensure ADUs and JDUs do not significantly increase water usage and ideally reduce water usage. When an ADU or a JDU is proposed, the ADU will be limited to 1,000 square feet. ADUs and JDUs will be required to incorporate water-efficient fixtures, and any existing structure on the lot will be required to retrofit fixtures with the water-efficient fixtures outlined in the ordinance. Additionally, the lot would require that new and existing landscape consists of open space, native drought-tolerant plants, pervious and non-pervious surfaces that do not require permanent irrigation. An exception is made to allow for drip irrigation for food gardens, community gardens, fruit, and nut trees. Further water conservations may also be required as appropriate, including gray water and rainwater catchment systems to ensure compliance. To ensure compliance, applicants will need to submit documentation to the building services showing that they meet the required water conservation measures. And planning staff will collaborate with the building services to develop documentation forms to help both applicants and review staff to manage this process smoothly. The proposed water conservation measures for ADUs and JDUs will work in conjunction with the broader basin-wide effort that are being undertaken by the groundwater sustainability agencies to incorporate water conservation project and management actions that will help put the sub-basins on track to achieve sustainability. The project and management actions include projects such as construction of water diversion facilities, creek and flood plain restoration, infrastructure to prevent seawater intrusion, and best practices for agricultural and residential water uses. County staff and Coastal Commission staff have agreed that this approach balances water conservation with the need to provide a path for much-needed housing in the North County Land Use Plan area. The North County area is a prominent part of the county and is home to many members of the county's workforce, particularly agricultural workers. And over the years, the county has been aware of situations involving unpermitted housing, which has serious implications to life, health, and safety. Allowing for ADUs and JDUs can alleviate some of the housing shortage that contributes to the rise of illegal housing units in this area. I do want to mention that in today's hearing, we have representatives from the respective groundwater sustainability agencies on our Zoom to answer any questions the Commission So following today's meeting, staff plans to present the updates to the Board of Supervisors after the first of the year in 2025. The regulations must then be submitted to the state HCD within 60 days after the board hears them to ensure that ADU law amendments align with state law as closely as possible. This approach aligns with the direction of the Coastal Commission and state HCD staff, which requires that draft LCP amendments implementing ADU law be submitted to state HCD for a review prior to the local adoption and submission to the Coastal Commission. Once the state returns with comments or finds the language consistent, it will be submitted to the Coastal Commission for certification. So for today's ADU regulations, we have received some public comment. The comments express concerns regarding the water efficiency standards and deed restrictions on properties, the Energy Star versus the Water Smart Appliances, review of the water quantity and quality, and updates to the Del Monte Forest Land Use Plan. Also, updates to conversion of illegal structures to ADUs. Based on this initial feedback, staff recommend that we work with county council to provide clarifying modifications to fair concerns raised around existing structures and non-livable space in multiple-family dwellings, and making these updates prior to presenting the final ordinance to the Board of Supervisors. Today, it is recommended that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the Board of Supervisors find the project statutorily exempt from CEQA and adopt a resolution of intent to amend the Monterey County Local Coastal Program, amending the applicable land use plans, adopt an ordinance, and add an appendix to update regulations related to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. That was complete and succinct, much appreciated. Commissioners, do you have any technical questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Mendoza, is that your hand going up?
There it is. There it is. We have something. Yeah, the only question I have in reference to the North County ADU, size limit of 1,000 square feet, is that correct? What would be the purpose of that, instead of the 1,200 feet that everybody else would be, that are not in the coastal zone, be able to get? I think that the water usage, if it's water usage-related, I think most of the concern would be like the water in the restrooms and the kitchens or what have you. What if they want to make the bedrooms a little bit bigger? I think that that does not really accomplish what we're trying to accomplish by reducing it from 1,200 square feet to 1,000 square feet. Or what was the purpose of that?
Yeah, so the intention behind limiting the ADU to the 1,000 square feet was reducing the, essentially reducing the amount of bathrooms in the unit. State ADU law provides that local jurisdictions can adopt a maximum and minimum size requirement for ADUs. We can establish 800 square feet for a one-bedroom ADU, and 1,000 for anything above two bedrooms, which would be the maximum, minimum. And then 1,200 square feet encompasses all ADUs. So the intention was to reduce essentially the bathroom use and water use.
If I may just add to that, staff took a, staff in these coastal areas where we had substantial resource constraints in other areas, for example, in Big Sur, there were other resource constraints we took under consideration. So in those areas, we generally looked at the size limitation as kind of a proxy to help restrict those ADUs. There's nothing, to my understanding, in state law that would prohibit us for going up to the 1,200, 1,200 minimum. Again, that was a guidance that we did as kind of a proxy to help limit the ability for ADUs to be large and accommodate a larger number of people and higher water use. We would, that would be something we would also want to double-check with Coastal Zone, Coastal Commission, if they had any concerns if we were to make a change. The other reason why we looked at a size limitation as well is it just, it aligns nicely with the potential for, where possible, exempting those ADUs. So it also allowed kind of consistency in the regulation for that, trying to optimally streamline.
Thank you.
Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you. So if you could go back to the slide with the exemptions, non-exempt, and the full CDP. So does the 60-day turnaround apply to all of these as well? Or if you get kicked into the coastal development permit category, do you still get that benefit?
So state law provides that once we receive the completed application, the 60-day period kicks in. In terms of how we process our coastal development permits, I'd have to defer.
Yeah, so if, so that 60 days does not apply if other regulatory permits are needed to be obtained. So if a coastal development permit is needed, that coastal development permit, we could process it as a priority, if that is a board-directed housing priority to process, but it wouldn't, that 60 days does not trigger. So really, that 60-day review is for the categories that fall under exemption determinations, actual ministerial approvals, and/or non-hearing body approvals.
And if you could just review through the chair.
I think Ms. Dunlan had an addition.
Yeah, I was just going to add, this is one of those situations where we're balancing state ADU law with the Coastal Act, and you kind of have to meet both requirements, and sometimes they're not exactly.
In line.
Exactly.
So the question I would have then is if you could just review that first category again, and clarify for me what decisions we make might impact the number of opportunities in this first category that's exempt? Because this seems like this is the most streamlined possibilities for people in Monterey County to produce an ADU.
So, so just a couple considerations. We worked closely with the Coastal Commission for the language around and the potential for certain accessory dwelling units and junior ADUs to be exempt from coastal development permitting. In those circumstances, there isn't a lot of discretion that we have here locally. It's really state law and how state housing, community development, and Coastal Commission are working together to try to find compatibilities to balance. So there isn't a lot of discretion that we have locally, but what we did do is we, per Coastal Commission staff, in identifying how and what categories of accessory dwelling units could, may be exempt, we refer to that state law so that as it's updated, we don't have to make changes to our code, we can just defer to state law. There are other, the other triggers, really the non-exempt development in coastal zone, there's not, again, that's state law, that's deeply codified in our code and in state law. So there isn't really discretion in what we can do today that would change some of those categories. So, and I'll defer if, either Edgar or County Council, if I'm missing anything. So I don't think in terms of the categories for exemption, and that there's a huge amount of discretion because we are bound by these dwelling state laws.
Okay, and one final question then. Existing, conversion of existing habitable space would be like a guest house? What is that?
Yeah, it'd be conversion of potentially a guest house, portion of your single-family dwelling, if you want to wall off a section of your house to convert it to an ADU.
Got it. Thank you so much.
And I just, I appreciate that. I'd like to follow up on that really briefly. So conversion of existing habitable space that is attached, you're not talking about, guest houses can be attached or not attached?
Yeah, through the, through the direction of the coastal staff, habitable space is already habitable, and it won't be existing, expanding the existing footprint of the house. So it'd potentially still be guest houses that are detached.
Thank you. And I guess I just want to get a really good understanding of, suppose I want to, you know, I want to apply for a JDU that is going to take my garage and make it into a JDU. What steps would I go through, what steps do we envision, and what kind of costs are involved in terms of both permitting, and what reports might I be required to obtain?
Yeah, for a JDU, so it's already existing, JDUs are within the existing footprint of the home, so it won't be expanding the home. Potentially, under our current process proposed, there would be an exempt development, and it would have to go through a building permit process over the counter.
So if I'm going to turn my attached garage into a JDU, and it's within all the size regulations, what do I have to do, and what do I, what do I have to pay?
I defer this on the payments and fees to Mel.
So, okay, so if you're coming in for just a junior accessory dwelling unit that converts existing space within your residential unit, and we're going to, I'm going to put it in the, so the application that comes in, we would need the building plans and kind of structural design, because there are some concerns if a structural wall needs to be moved or modified, even if you're within an existing, to be able to make a determination whether or not, to verify if it is exempt or no.
Do I have to hire an engineer or architect to, first, number one, before I start, I have to have somebody provide certified plans for converting my attached garage into a JDU, all right? That's the first step?
You don't need plans, correct.
Okay.
Yes. And then when you come in to the door, the, and I'm looking to Ms. Kanga to correct me if I'm wrong, at our permit counter upon submittal, our permit tech should be able to make the determination, based on the materials provided, whether or not it falls into just the building permit category, or whether or not it potentially needs to go back to planning for review to make a determination. If it's deemed that planning permits are not needed, and that it indeed is exempt, then they will just be paying for the building construction permits, and those are calculated based on a square footage basis. And there is a calculator on our website to be able to determine what that building permit fee would be. There are other ancillary fees that also get attached to those, and I can't speak specifically, but we do have a calculator online that individuals can go and see based on the square footage of what they're proposing, and that value, what the cost would be for those permits.
Okay, so I walk up to the counter, I've got plans from some kind of appropriate professional, that says I want to convert my attached garage into a JDU with a kitchen and a bathroom, okay? And I'm in the coastal zone, and I live in Big Sur, but it doesn't matter, it could be any place in the coastal zone. So I come up to the counter, I provide you, the counter person, with my plans and my application, and I assume I pay some sort of a fee at that time. And then that person who's at the counter will have to decide, what other reports might I need? Do I need to then have something from environmental health? Do I need to have something about water, septic, access? Do I need anything, would I be looking towards anything else? Because my point here is, not that I'm trying to pin down the numbers, although I think we can get a maximum JDU number, because we have a maximum size for what those can be. So, you know, you can give a number for that. The permits are, in my experience, only a fraction of what the cost of the endeavor is. is. So I'm trying to really delve into, so people's expectation isn't that they're gonna just be able to walk in, provide the plans, and, and get the permit, because I don't think that's what's gonna happen. And I want us to be managing our expectations appropriately. So I'm really trying to walk through the process and say, okay, person trying to do what we say we want them to do, what are the steps, and what kind of costs may they be making themselves subject to? In practical sense, not just in, this is the rule. So if you can help us just walk through that experience like we're doing it, I, I think it would be really helpful for people.
Yeah, so, so again, the, the version that has been given where you have a garage that is being converted. So you would prepare your plans, you would do the analysis. I would like to, I don't actually wanna speak to environmental health's role in this, but there is a, a review and verification through environmental health with regards to, with regards to septic or wastewater as well as water. And I believe we do have staff from there. So there would need to be a review and confirmation from environmental health that water and wastewater are addressed, and we'll have them speak to that. So your plans would have to include source of water and, you know, fixtures. There are also, depending what water district you're in, if you're adding fixtures, there could also trigger additional considerations for ensuring that you have water sufficient for additional fixtures. If you are in the North County area, but you're not doing any additional construction, you still do have requirements to look at your existing fixtures. So work with a, with your design professional to look at your existing fixtures, look at opportunities to replace those for water savings, as well as consider looking at your outside landscape and existing areas, if there's a potential to further reduce your water use as a part of the consideration for the application. And then when you do come in, there, so we're gonna take the route where you are exempt from a coastal, coastal development permit. So planning would do a, a review and confirm you're exempt from a coastal development permit. So for Housing Community Development, we would just be talking your building construction permits, where that V calculator is. Because you're within an existing structure, we wouldn't be looking at soils reports, arborist or archaeological reports, unless you triggered the need, for example, to expand your footprint. There is the ability for, to expand your footprint by a small amount in order to accommodate egress and ingress. So if you did need to expand the footprint of the existing structure, that could trigger some additional reports. So to the extent that you can stay within, fully within that existing footprint's gonna make the process easier. When it does come through, and I believe I saw Connor Cappy, I'd like to refer to, if I could have Connor from Environmental Health step in and talk about the process that environmental health goes through to work with applicants, looking at JADUs additions to their existing garages.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm just using the JADU in a garage example to get us into the concrete, and where you wish to say it would be different, as Ms. Beretti has done, that's helpful, if it was in a different category. But, okay, so I've got, you've got me down to, you've got the designer, the design professional, we're gonna have an application fee, planning, we're gonna need a building permit, and some sort of environmental review which doesn't come free, and potentially some review of water use which may or may not be separate. So those are the things I've heard so far. Does that sound right? Okay, go. Our clerk Zoom is a little flaky, but we're looking for Mr. Cappy here. Yes, there you are.
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Good morning, Planning Commission. This is Connor Cappy representing Environmental Health electronically. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
So for the example that we just went over about the garage being converted into a one-bedroom junior ADU, I can confirm that there would be no increase in wastewater design volume. So the, the most we would be asking for is a performance evaluation of the septic system to make sure that it's in good working order, but it would not be processed as an increase in wastewater generation to the property.
And while you're here, are there any other things that would have to happen for this, this hypothetical ADU from environmental health's point of view?
Yes, so the, the other portion of the review would be for the drinking water requirements, and a JADU does not constitute a water service connection on a private or a shared well. So again, the most we would be asking for would be a water quality report, bacteriological, primary inorganic and secondary contaminants, just to make sure that there are no quality issues with the water. But, but yeah, that, that would be about it. That would be the extent of the review for the scenario that we were just talking about.
So that count, I'm hearing a septic review that you're gonna have to have a consultant for, and a review of the water quality and quantity, I assume, of your existing well, which you would also have to hire somebody to do. Is that correct?
Almost correct. We would not be looking at quantity in this case, but, but yes, for the, the quality requirement.
Okay.
And, and I do wanna, I do wanna say, you know, this is, of course, if, if, this is only if the health department or property owner did not have recent data to, to provide. If they had data within the last two to three years or so, we would be able to accept that as well.
Okay, that's really helpful. Thank you. So that gets me to the design, the planning permit, septic report, water report for environmental health, the building permit, which we're gonna come up with some sort of an estimate on, and potentially a discussion of water fixtures in some areas for this exempt development. Does that sound right?
That is correct. And then I think to your point, what I'm, what I was trying to do is, sort of, that was one particular, so let me, I, what I wanna do is try to, just for the public, to understand what some of the key triggers and design.
Before we go there, I'm trying to get a, I'm trying to get a number of zeros. I'm trying to get an order of magnitude cost here for this most simple action that we could take under the proposed development. So number of zeros, so people know, it's not, the triggers don't matter as much as we don't even know where we're starting. Can we do that? Is that, is that an estimate we could obtain?
If you give staff a little bit of time.
All right. If you wanna talk about the triggers while we're trying to come up with that, that would be great, because it's, it's a big step between policy language and practice on the ground, and I'm trying to bridge that with this discussion for so many people that are really trying to do what they feel is a pretty, pretty small thing that we're supposed to be encouraging them to do. So we don't want people to get their hopes up and then come in and say we can't afford it. That's where I'm after. I didn't mean to interfere with the triggers, which I think are also very important.
No, let me, so I'm gonna hand my laptop, because Mr. Sanchez is having connectivity challenges, so while he magically works with Anna and other colleagues of ours behind the scenes to, to help get some representative kind of pathway and costs, what I did wanna do is just kind of talk generally through for folks who are thinking about doing this, some of those, kind of, if your project includes this, it puts you in kind of a whole different review and cost category, essentially. So junior ADUs within existing structures are by far the easiest. And, so one, if you, anyone in the unincorporated area who has water and sewer service directly, development's gonna be much easier and much simpler because you don't have to go through the additional step with environmental health, you just, you already have those. Most individuals in the unincorporated area are on septic or other onsite wastewater treatment. That is typically, is typically kind of the most challenging to address when talking about junior ADUs or adding additional living space through an accessory dwelling unit. So that is something individuals should know. As Mr. Cappy said, if you are doing a junior ADU and you're making that addition within an existing structure, they really look at that as no increase, they just wanna make sure you have a properly performing system. If you are looking for anything, whether it's a junior ADU or an accessory dwelling unit, and again, those distinctions, JADUs are limited in size, JADUs must have internal circulation, whereas accessory dwelling units can be larger and are intended specifically not to have internal circulation so that they can be fully independent living units. So, and again, JADUs can share, are anticipated to share. So anything that you're doing within your structure, if you have to make structural changes in order to accommodate it, if you have to move a wall, you know, support wall or anything that is structural, that is gonna increase your cost because that is going, you're gonna need a structural design at that point. And you potentially could, depending on the nature of that structural change, could trigger the need for coastal development permits. That's one of those gray areas. So that's just something for folks to consider. If you, I mentioned it before, if you were looking to expand outside your existing footprint, the degree of that expansion, if it's, if it's attached and it's a large expansion, large addition, or if it's detached, the degree of that, and will, will really depend then on your site specific. If you need to put new foundation, you may need soils report. If there are trees in proximity where you may be constructing, you may then trigger the need for a, an arborist report. If you have environmentally sensitive habitat on your property, you may need a biologist report to evaluate whether or not that expanded footprint might have an impact on that. So the expanded footprint is what's going to really potentially trigger these additional costs in terms of professionals who need to do design and/or analyses for us to consider, and potentially put you into the requirement for another type of coastal development permit. If you are in environmentally sensitive habitat, tree removal for protected trees, cultural, archaeological development within 750 feet of cultural or ecologic, or, excuse me, archaeological resources and other stuff. So those are just some of the important triggers for individuals to know about their particular site and particular property that could quickly change the pathway that they need to do for entitlements and permits for a project that takes it out of that exempt or ministerial process. With that, I will look to see if Mr. Sanchez is able to share kind of some ballpark numbers of expectation for folks.
So for the building permit, the way it's established is the valuation of the construction. There is a calculation that takes the local multiplier, which in this case, it's the .038 times the evaluation of what it costs to construct the project. So say it costs around $50,000 for the construction of an AD, a JADU, a building permit would approximate around $2,000.
Okay, so what if I'm gonna just take my garage, and I'm just gonna put a curtain around the bathroom, and I put in a bathroom and a kitchen sink, and I'm gonna live in my garage? That's not gonna cost me $50,000 to construct. And I don't know how, I mean, again, that's chicken and egg problem, you know?
Yeah, through the chair. We don't have an exact estimate of how much it costs to, to construct a JADU, but if it's less, it takes less work, it potentially can be less for the building permit.
Okay, but that does give us an order of magnitude, and I appreciate that.
The other thing which I do wanna look at, there are considerations for development impact fees. There are also limitations to development impact fees based on size of your accessory dwelling unit, were you able to get?
Yeah, for JADUs, in this case, there would be no impact fees from school fees, and then there would also be, be waived from traffic impact fees.
And is there a trigger for when that is not the case with this ordinance?
Yeah, so for, state code provides that any ADU under 750 square feet, we should not apply school impact fees and traffic impact fees, so anything under 750 would not be, have those fees.
And as I recall, school impact fees are not very onerous, you know, I don't remember them being huge, but traffic impact fees can vary considerably. What kind of, what kind of numbers are we talking about for that? For, for an ADU, you know, let's say I'm an 800-foot attached ADU?
I think if I could, it'll be the easiest to address that, if we could ask our colleague, Bora. Sorry, Bora, I'm blinking on your last name, and.
Oh, man.
Edgar has my laptop. If you could speak a little bit to traffic fees and how they might vary in different areas in this circumstance with accessory dwelling units.
And I wanna thank my college colleagues for indulging me and just kinda trying to dive down into this, because I don't, my experience tells me that people expect, once you approve something and say you're gonna, gonna streamline it, that that means it's not gonna be super expensive. And I just wanna make sure we know what we're, what we're talking about here. So thank you.
Good morning. This is Borakaya from Engineering Services. So junior ADUs are exempt from traffic impact fees, no matter the size. The ADUs under 750 square feet under, exempt from traffic impact fees, and over 700 square feet will be proportionally calculated, depends on the size of the existing single-family dwelling.
Can you help me understand that? Suppose I want to make a detached ADU of 1,200 square feet is allowed some places, I believe, in the coastal zone? So let's say that would be the biggest. So what would the traffic fee, how would the traffic be calculated? Say I'm in the Del Monte Forest, I wanna put in a 1,200-square-foot detached ADU. How are you gonna determine how much traffic fee I would pay?
Sure. Let me pull up the traffic impact fees for Del Monte Forest area, and I will give you an example right now.
I really appreciate that.
Sure. So let's say the existing single-family dwelling is 2,000 square feet, and you are building a, an ADU 1,200 square feet. So we will take the 1,200 square feet, we will divide it by the existing single-family dwelling square footage, which is 2,000, and we'll get about .6, and then we will be, multiply that number with the existing traffic impact fees for the South Coast, which is 1,054, 1,054, which will come out to $632 for the countywide fee.
So that, that's, that traffic impact fee in that case is, sounds like it's, it's under $1,000.
It is. And also, there's the TMC fees as well, which will be, I will say, about $800. There are two fees at play.
All right, so we're looking at under $2,000 for traffic impact fees for what we believe to be one of the larger ADUs that could be approved. And that would be greater if the house were, say, 6,000 square feet. That would make that number bigger or smaller?
That would make it smaller.
Okay, all right. So it's compared, it's a comparison to the existing structure, and if you're making it a lot, if you're making it half again as big, it costs you more than if you're just making it a small amount bigger?
That is correct.
All right, that really helps. Thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome. And also, of course, if you're building in Carmel Valley, the traffic impact fee is much higher than South Coast, so the fee's gonna be higher in Carmel Valley area.
Understood. We're, we're looking at the moment at a coastal ordinance, so that's why I was kinda concentrating on the coastal areas. Commissioner Monsalvi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following your train of thought, those building permit fees and, and all the other fees, are they different or lower for conversions versus new constructions?
So yeah, there is a difference between new construction and a remodel essentially for a JADU. I believe for the remodels, it'd be 60% of the evaluation, so it'd be a lot less. For example, in the case of the, the $50,000 for a JADU, it'd be more of $1,000 for the permit for every model, right?
Thank you, through the chair. So the, the example you gave earlier, a $50,000 project, which also, I wanted to ask to confirm, Ms. Beretti had said that the fees are based on the square footage of the project, but then you're saying that they're based on the cost of the project. But then you said that in the example. But then you said that in the example of the garage conversion, it was a .038. So, the conversion gets a .038 factor, but a new construction gets a different factor?
Yeah, for the remodel, if I'm answering the question right, I think it was just a misinterpretation, but yeah, for a new addition, it'd be the .38. For a remodel, times the 50,000, which would be around $2,000 for the building permit. And for a remodel, it'd be, it takes 60% of the 50,000 and multiply that by the .38, which would be more of 1,000.
Yeah. So, just for clarity, for the record, mine was a misspeak and I apologize for that. It's based on valuation. And if it's a remodel or within an existing structure as opposed to new construction, that is a further reduced cost versus new construction.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And I'm, I appreciate you testing me too. I'm paying attention. Thank you.
Commissioner Gomez?
We're going from, go back to the permitting process, the outline, the slide, that's three different sections. Yes, that's light. So, we're going from, based on our conversations with the Coastal Commission, we're going from a de facto approval of essentially the first box there to a may be approved, right? What does that may mean in terms of the Coastal Commission? In terms of their process, do we know what process they're going to use to evaluate and determine whether or not it needs to go through them?
So, nothing will change in terms of county's authority when we process, make determinations and process coastal administrative coastal development permits versus when it's in an area, for example, between the First Public Road and the, and the sea where that is original jurisdiction retained by the Coastal Commission. So, that process isn't going to change. So, where the, the challenge that we had, our language that we originally proposed overreached and was not consistent with, with, with the read of state law and is a very, and this whole concept around what may be exempt is a very active discussion between state housing, community development, and Coastal Commission. So, so where we have landed is consistent with current state law, but allows those two state agencies to make some determinations and update state law and then we'll be able to effectuate that. So, the, the may be exemption simply comes down to, for example, if just, that again, it doesn't change whether or not county staff would make that determination or if it falls within coastal commissions, purview is appealable to them. But that would be, those would be decisions that we would make based on a case-by-case If you're in a view shed and you need one additional foot of, one additional foot of height, for example, in order to accommodate your design for your, your ADU or JADU, that's where that may comes in. That may not trigger anything additional or it may trigger development within a view shed that needs additional consideration. So, that's why it's may, but those determinations fall back to the particular circumstances on the site that our staff would be assessing and evaluating and some of these other kind of non-exempt development triggers. We are also working with Coastal Commission staff to better understand their, so Coastal Commission has a waiver process that on paper looks quite similar to the process that you go through for coastal administrative permit. And we are working with them as well through our regulations and just through process to also identify opportunities where we can be implementing and take advantage of that waiver process, which can substantially reduce the time and I think therefore costs for processing if you need a coastal administrative permit where that's possible. So, those are some of the caveats that are site-specific that, but nothing changes in terms of the jurisdiction's role and when it would trigger Coastal Commission. But we are really working with them, with Coastal Commission to look at every possible avenue where we can exempt or where we can waive a permit process or where we can streamline that process to the extent feasible for law.
Just kind of a follow-up. So, the state, I guess, Housing Agency and Coastal Commission are working through this process. Is there, do we know, do we have an end time or end date or is that something we're going to have to wait for quite some time?
So, we don't have--
I'm assuming that's going to mean we have to amend our, our local coastal plan for ADUs.
So, our hope is that we won't. So, for example, it's an active area and based on what Coastal Commission staff shared with us, they are hoping that the agencies can, in the coming months to year, get some resolve and clarification for what is exempt, what is not, you know, where can we have lesser or more streamlined automatic processes? So, but the exact timing for that, I don't know, but that's what staff indicated and that was, we should, the, so if state law changes, there's always a chance we have to amend our local coastal program. The reason in particular with regard to the exemption language, we cited state law so that we don't have to amend our LCP if state law changes. And that was at the recommendation of Coastal staff because they do expect this to be an ongoing area where there may be updates, refinements to state law.
This question is a little different, relates to groundwater sustainability. We, we have two different agencies that have jurisdiction in, I think in North County, right? And those two different agencies, I think, are at different places in terms of groundwater sustainability. Is there a difference in terms of what's allowed based on those two different experiences and where they're at? And I'm not sure exactly where those two agencies meet. And so, that'd be, if you have a map, it'd be helpful.
Yeah, there's the Paharo Valley Groundwater Management Agency and the Salinas Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency. The North County is divided into three sub-basins. It's the Langley Canyon, Langley Sub Basin, the 180, 400-foot aquifer, and the Paharo Valley Sub Basin, which is managed by the Paharo Valley. Currently, the restriction on ADUs in the North County encompasses the whole, all three sub-basins. So, there's no difference in the way that it's currently being applied. And looking at the other jurisdictions, for example, in the Paharo Valley Sub Basin expands over to the Santa Cruz County line and there is, I've looked and there's no current restriction on ADUs. So, the way that they interpret it may be a little bit different. I do know that we have some representatives from the groundwater sustainability's and I believe they'd probably be better answering some of the questions.
Yeah, and we're working right now, Sarah Hardgrave from the Salinas Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency, we're working to, there she is, she's panelist. So, Sarah can start and we'll look and see if we have someone from Paharo Valley as well.
Yes, thank you Commissioners for the opportunity to address this question. I would just want to clarify that the groundwater sustainability agencies do not have land use authority. And so, we do not have the ability to restrict land use decisions based on the availability of water supply. However, we do really appreciate the approach that staff has taken to incorporating the water use efficiency records into the ordinance. We do believe this is an effective way to meet both the housing needs while also ensuring an efficient approach to water usage. Our agency is in the process of, of developing a water use efficiency program for the rural residential areas within our jurisdiction. And this is a very complimentary approach that the county staff has proposed. So, I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Commissioner, is that helpful?
I'd like to also just add, we also have, excuse me, we have Brian Lockwood and Casey Miusol from the Paharo Valley Water Management Agency and Groundwater Sustainability Agency. They've been promoted to panelists so they can have an opportunity to talk about their agency and if, or how there could be some differences there.
Absolutely. I was just checking to see if there are any specific questions for Ms. Hardgrave. Commissioner Daniels, was that you raising your hand about that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking to Ms. Hardgrave to find out if there is, we got some feedback in public comment and it has to do with the staff reports' articulation of the effort that's being undertaken by the GSA. And I'm wondering if Ms. Hardgrave could just articulate perhaps for the commission a little bit further, the, you know, very briefly, the effort that is being undertaken for this region by the GSA and the planning that, that is underway to perhaps help inform us what is occurring and provide some context as we make this decision. Thank you.
Sure. So, the, the North County coastal area, as, as, as your staff has articulated, is primarily included in the 180, 400-foot aquifer sub-basin. There's a small area on the eastern edge that, in the Langley Sub Basin. The 180, 400-foot aquifer sub-basin is designated as a critical overdraft by the State Department of Water Resources, primarily due to seawater intrusion. And the seawater intrusion problem is primarily occurring outside of the coastal zone and the other areas of the sub-basin. So, our efforts at this time are really focused on a series of feasibility studies for projects to address seawater intrusion as well as demand planning to look at how to reduce overall water usage in the sub-basin. In the North County coastal area, that is part of the Northern 100 Sub Basin, that is an area that really would most benefit from improvements in water efficiency in the rural residential communities. Those, those areas have not had the benefit of the water conservation programs that are put in place by the larger water utilities and public water systems. And so, many of our older homes that have not had the opportunity to participate in programs for efficient water use fixtures and the sort of thing that is proposed in your, in your ordinance today. So, I'm not sure if that completely answers your question. We have a lot of work underway to address the larger situation of overdraft conditions in that sub-basin, but the North County coastal area is sort of uniquely situated within the larger sub-basin.
Thank you very much. That does help.
If it's okay with Commissioner Gomez, can we hear from the other agencies as well? Please. It's like we have Mr. Lockwood as a panelist, if you'd care to go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Nice to see everyone. Thank you Commissioners for having us available today to, to present a little bit and answer your questions. I think Ms. Hardgrave said it very well, that groundwater sustainability agencies are not land use planning agencies. The Paharo Valley Water Management Agency oversees the Paharo Valley Groundwater Sub Basin. It is a critically overdrafted basin. It's dealing with the chronic lowering of groundwater levels, seawater intrusion, groundwater quality degradation through a combination of lowering water level, seawater intrusion, nitrate contamination, and so forth. We have various projects and programs in place that are hopefully pushing us on the pathway towards sustainability as new water supply facilities are presently under construction. We're also tracking various future developments. So, the city of Watsonville has an environmental impact report out right now for its own long-range plan, which includes many new developments and increased water use within the city limits. And the county of Santa Cruz also is looking to do further increased development within the Paharo Valley Basin. So, all of these are going to put greater stress on groundwater resources and our agency will have to work with our community to figure out how to maintain sustainable resources or eventually achieve sustainable resources, even given the increases demand on groundwater pumping. Almost all of the water in our valley that is utilized for domestic and commercial and agricultural uses comes from the groundwater basin. So, any new development does indeed put a strain on that. Of course, we're aware that there's a desperate need for more housing within our region. Thank you.
Thank you. Any immediate questions for Mr. Lockwood?
Mr. Lockwood, I just, I asked about the boundaries for each agency, sustainability agency, do you, would you care to describe where your agency goes into Monterey County?
Yeah, let me see if I can pull up a map here real quickly, it might be useful to see. Oh, it looks like my colleague Casey is already on it. Thank you, Casey. That's the outline of the statutory boundary of our Valley Water Management Agency, which also is generally the boundary between, well, at least where our boundary ends and the Salinas Groundwater Sustainability Agency begins on the south side. In that area, we're, you know, we're showing seawater intrusion within the Paharo Valley Basin, but of course, there's seawater intrusion occurring in the Salinas Valley and up in the Santa Cruz Mid County as well. So, it kind of goes right along the edge of sort of Granite Ridge and, you know, we generally speak of it as sort of moth landing to a romis, but clearly there's, you can see the outline of the boundary itself. And we'll note that this boundary was established by an act of the state legislature in and around 1984, 30 years before the passage of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. So, the department, we, we worked collaboratively with our neighbors to the north and to the south at the time, mostly Monterey County Water Resources Agency, to do jurisdictional boundary modifications around 2014 or so, or maybe it was 2016, excuse me, for governance purposes. Hopefully, that's helpful, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you. It was. I appreciate that.
And then, Ms. Beretti, we had someone else as well or?
No, I think there was, it was Mr. Lockwood's colleague.
Perfect. Thank you. I think Commissioner Gomez, I mean Commissioner Mendoza has a question as well.
Right. Based on the information we were, we just heard from, in reference to the water, they mentioned that Watsonville really has no restrictions in, in reference to the development and they have future development that are actually getting water from the same aquifer that North Monterey County does. And yet, we're being limited, goes back to the 1,000-square-foot. I think that that should be changed over to 1,200 feet, just like everybody else for that reason alone. Because he did mention that there's no restrictions, there are so many new projects that they have coming on, getting water from the same place we're getting it from. So, why should North Monterey County be restricted to 1,000 feet and they basically can do pretty much anything else they want in, in the Santa Cruz County end of it? So, I would appreciate it if we could change that to 1,200 square feet and keep it in line with everybody else. That would be really beneficial.
Okay. I did see Ms. Hardgrave had a hand up. Maybe she wanted to add something to this?
I just, if it would be helpful, I would also like to share a map to show the boundaries.
Sure. We like maps.
So, the 180, 400-foot aquifer sub-basin covers this portion of the Elkhorn Slough watershed. And then, essentially, the line is along San Juan Grade Road that goes into the Langley Basin. So, this is the area of the eastern portion of the coastal zone in North County. And then, everything to the north in the white area is under Paharo Valley Water Management Agency. I hope this is helpful.
I think that's a good map. I kind of like it better than the last. I kind of like it better than the last one, just because I'm old and it's easier to see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Commissioner Daniels?
So I have one additional question for staff that is related to what we just discussed, and that's about the decision to not count ADUs and JADUs towards the build-out limitations in the North County Plan area. Is that, can you just expand on that decision? And is that consistent with all of the other areas that we have both inland and coastal zone enacted an ADU ordinance or are working on one?
Yeah. So generally speaking, state law does indicate that accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units should not count towards build-out limitations. That being said, the state does recognize that there are resource constraints and limitations that could be appropriate to apply limitations. The, so staff feels that it's consistent with the spirit of state law, as well as appropriate in this North County area not to count those towards the build-out limitation with the added water conservation saving techniques that we've put in place, as well as also recognizing that state law around. So going back to the approach as well of working in coordination with the groundwater sustainability agencies who are now in place and taking actions to address the broader sustainability planning for water in those regions.
Okay. It was a really good discussion, and I want to thank you, everybody. I do have a couple more things. One is very technical, which is, I just spoke with counsel a minute ago. In other cases where we're aware of a changing platform in state statute, we've included language which didn't specifically cite a section of the law entirely. It also included language saying, or as applicable state law may subsequently change, so that we had a more, because what if they changed the number, you know? So I suggested to counsel that perhaps you might look at something like, some language like that to help keep from having to come back here for minor changes in statute, although I don't mind talking to anybody ever. So that was just a technical thought. And then one is just a general question, because we note that the proposed ordinance would apply to coastal zoning areas where residential uses are allowed. Can you just tell me where they are not? What areas would not be allowed to move forward with an ADU under this ordinance? I guess I'm not talking about geographic so much as, in terms of zoning.
Yeah, we're trying to look it up, so we are correct and accurate. If you can just bear with staff for one moment while we do that. One thing, and again, I did just want to respond to the comment around the size limitation in North County. So again, should you choose to make a motion that includes an increase to the 1,200, I would just want to acknowledge that we will want to, we'll have to work with state coastal commission staff to see if that triggers any concerns. We don't believe, so should that be desired, we don't believe that 1,200 square foot would, based on our conversations with coastal staff, would make or break their support for the ordinance as we have it. But we would want to double check that before formally putting that in and going to the board.
Thank you. And then I wanted to just let everyone know that once we've completed this question section, we're going to take a brief break and come back for the public comment on this item. Mr. Mendoza, did you want to talk again while we're waiting for them to look that up?
I sure do. Just real quick, we received the report in reference to the garage, converting the garage over to a junior ADU. They mentioned that there would be a water quality test. Why would there be a water quality test if it's probably the same water that is serving the residents?
I will speak my understanding, and Mr. Cappy will chime in if I misspeak. So the water quality, so one of the reasons why they do water quality is when you're adding an additional dwelling unit, there's a potential that you'll have renters, you could potentially have renters as opposed to just your individual, single-family resident. And so my understanding of the water quality testing is consistent with the EHB's monitoring to ensure any renters that come on site are fully aware and have appropriate water quality for their drinking water. Mr. Cappy can step in if that is not correct, but that's been my understanding.
In other words, you're allowed to put your family at risk, but not some winner. Mr. Cappy, did you want to chime in?
I just want to, that was exactly right.
Great comment. Thank you. Mr. Angelo, are you prepared for?
Yeah, through the chair. The zoning districts that wouldn't allow for, where ADUs would not be permitted would be the public quasi-public zoning, open space recreation zoning, the conservation recreation zoning district, resource conservation zoning districts, and heavy and light industrial zoning districts. I believe also the institutional commercial zoning district would not allow for ADUs. And I believe that's, that would be the ones where they wouldn't be allowed.
Okay. Well, I will, we'll want to talk about that some more because I wasn't aware that you weren't allowed to have residences in all of those as listed. But thank you very much. That's really good. And if no one has an objection, I think we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break so that our attention will be at its highest when we hear the public comment.
All right, since our distinguished members are now returning from outdoors, if we can settle, people. Don't make me go all Girl Scout on you. All right, I'm going to reconvene this at 10:44 and proceed to a question that Commissioner Gomez still had that we didn't get to before we go to public comment. Commissioner?
Commissioner Gomez.
Commissioner. I can't get anybody's name right.
You got the GO and the Z.
I apologize. I got the planner wrong. I must be off on name stake, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, after everything is all said and done, and let's say ADU is complete and the garage is converted, and I bought my property 25 years ago, and maybe it was worth half a million dollars. Now, if I add the ADU, is my property tax going to be valued now at, let's say if it's gone up 500%, and I'm paying, let's say, $5,000 a year, will my property tax all of a sudden go from $5,000 to $25,000?
Because I have experience with this. So, yes, the way the property tax assessments work, I can't give you numbers, but if you do a formal remodel, upon completing that construction, you will be assessed an incremental increase based on that remodel portion of your property. The entire property is not reassessed, but that remodel addition is reassessed. So you'll have an incremental, like, increase in assessment.
Thank you. That's great news.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, anybody else with questions before we go to the public? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open this to public comment. Anybody who would like to speak about this proposed ordinance? Mr. Panzer, come on down. You'll have three minutes.
Chair Deale and members of the Commission, terrific conversation. I appreciate the deep dive into what's being proposed here. I've been doing land use and entitlements in Monterey County since about 1985, and while the staff report says the purpose of the ordinance is to streamline the permit process, what you're hearing today is that's really not the reality. So I appreciate the comment about managing public expectations. The report references California Code of Regulation Section 13250, which has coastal development permits for non-exempt development, which includes vegetation removal, development at ESHA, development in highly scenic areas 50 feet from a coastal bluff. Septic systems, I was surprised to hear Health say that if you added a kitchen, a garbage grinder, and a restroom, they wouldn't require, they wouldn't consider that to be extra flows because typically with the new septic ordinance they adopted, particularly in the Carmel Highlands, that's a brand-new septic system at $50,000. First public road in the sea is another exemption. If more than 10% increase in the internal floor area of a home, that requires a coastal development permit. And then there's an exemption for significant non-attached structures, and it references, i.e., garages, so it would seem to me if you built an ADU. So really what you have is a process here that basically says there's very few exemptions you're in line for a coastal development permit. I'm currently working on one down along the coast in Aurora del Mar. I want to say, as I recall, that permit fee alone is $15,000. To get to your question about fees, I would estimate to support an application, it's probably on the order of $50,000, an archaeological report, a biological report, an arborist report, plans, structural plans, they require geologic reports. It's not for the faint of heart, you know, $80,000 to get a permit, not a building permit, just a permit. I think really that's what we're talking about here. What I would also say is that if, the other thing about the promise that once you're deemed complete, you can get to a hearing in 60 days, is not the reality in the current environment in HCD with staffing levels and permit workloads. If you want to codify that or try to get that to move forward, there should be something in the ordinance that says if it doesn't happen in 60 days. Because with the Permit Streamlining Act, I've had like four or five projects in the last year, they have not met those California requirements for review, and you beg, you plead, you cajole to try to get somebody to do something with your project, and there it sits. That's my fear with this. And then finally, I would say there is also, never mind, I'll stop there, it's good enough for three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Panzer, on both your comments and for your paying attention to the time. Anyone else in the chambers, please come forward. You will have three minutes to speak your piece.
My name is Martha Chaviria, and I appreciate the dialogue also. I know I've been following this from the very beginning. Yes, I know you guys have seen me here at every meeting. I really appreciate the dialogue and the costs and the fees and everything, but people need to be aware, and I am aware of all of those existing costs. It's unfortunate, you know, those grants that were out there for people to apply for ADUs is no longer available. Hopefully, maybe something like that, and I know I'm dreaming, but that would be nice. I just wanted to add that, you know, with, with all of these costs and all of these regulations, is it aligned with the Coastal Commission? For example, if there's these permits that you have to get, like, all these triggers that you're saying you need, that you're having to apply in the forefront, for example, you know, the soils report, the traffic fees, the water quality, when you get to the Coastal Commission, I'm not sure, you know, what type of regulations or, you know, reports and requirements that they're going to ask for, are these aligned with the Coastal Commission? So that's, that's my question. And the process that you described, you know, the 60-day review, we, and I think you guys answered that, it depends, once you get to the Coastal Commission, and what, how long that would take. So I just wanted to get clarification there. Other than that, I'm just really, really excited that we're at the final stages. I really appreciate everyone's effort and time and, and how you guys really dug into this land use ordinance and the policy to make it happen. So I really appreciate that. Again, I'm representing a chair of a committee of a lot of residents in North County that were really looking into an opportunity to have housing, to, to help support the future housing shortage. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers want to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move to the online participants. Madam Clerk?
Christina McGinnis.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Deale and Honorable Commissioners. My name is Christina McGinnis, and I'm testifying today on behalf of Keep Big Sur Wild. As we have stated in meetings for the Big Sur Land Use Plan Update, we are in support of the use of ADUs and JADUs as a solution to the need for long-term housing in Big Sur for employees and residents. And this would be a much preferred option to potentially expanding the Commercial Zone District in Big Sur. As you know, when the Ad hoc Planning Committee held a meeting in Big Sur, many residents expressed the same sentiment about the preference for ADUs to serve the need for additional long-term residential housing in Big Sur. We agree with the size limitation of 1,000 square feet for ADUs and the prohibition of short-term rentals. We agree with the allowance for conversion of existing guest houses to ADUs to address long-term housing needs. And we would also like to offer some additional suggestions for ADUs to ensure that they will not impact the critical view shed in Big Sur and to enhance the potential for them to be used to address long-term housing needs in Big Sur. The most important consideration for ensuring that ADUs are used for long-term housing is the enforcement of them, specifically that they will not be used for short-term rentals. As we have stated in many hearings, there is a significant challenge with zoning enforcement of STRs in Big Sur in particular due to its remoteness. If Big Sur could have a dedicated zoning enforcement officer who would be required to regularly monitor it, that would be a great start. Perhaps there could also be incentives offered by the county for things like ensuring they are used for long-term rental housing or employee housing in Big Sur. For example, if the landowner is voluntarily willing to de-restrict their ADU as such, they could be offered expedited or reduced fee permitting costs for the county. Additionally, incentives to encourage owners to cap the rental rates to retain them as affordable and not rented at market rate would be desirable. And it's also really important that any additional ADUs are subject to all critical view shed and environmental protection policies in the Big Sur Land Use Plan, such as the Land Use Plans' policy references to water protection, which acknowledge various communities' limitation on water availability. Finally, I just want to comment, we are very pleased to hear that there's been a referral to consider a moratorium on new VSUs during the Big Sur Land Use Plan's current update process. This is a critical step needed to ensure the protection of Big Sur. Thank you all so much for your work, and I echo some of the earlier comments commending the Planning Commission and staff for the hard work you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Margie K. Margie K., you should, thank you.
Hi, okay, I'm on the way to now. Thank you. I want to speak to the confusion you may be having for understanding North County water issues and boundaries. My friend, General Manager Brian Lockwood spoke on North County sub-basins that were identified by the 1995 Fugaro Hydrogeologic Report written by Martin Feeney. Monterey, but, and then Monterey County Water Resources Agency has different names for subaquifers. And then to complicate more, the Salinas Valley Basin GSA has, again, different boundaries and names. And this is all for North County I'm speaking on. And then Sarah Hardgrave of the GSA said, that Salinas Valley Basin GSA said that the Langley Sub Basin goes to the San Juan grade, yet the west boundary actually goes to part of Strawberry Road, very, very close to me. And there's a, Granite Ridge was, has been mentioned, the Langley Basin, Sub Basin has been mentioned. There's so many different basins and lines of, that are not the same. To understand all this is so confusing. I've been following water in North County since 1994, and I'm still baffled and confused when I'm listening to whatever agency is talking. So a good education on North County water and all the confusion of this, it may be helpful to some of you. And there is new monitoring well going in at Strawberry to try to identify that area of Langley, the very edge of Langley. That's one of the problems we have is, is the groundwater basins, the groundwater well levels, understanding that, and that's still a lot of work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Molly Erickson.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Deale and Commissioners. Molly Erickson, representing friends, artists, and neighbors of Oakhorn Slough. I appreciate Margie K.'s description to help explain that North County water issues are very complicated. They are not nearly as simple as perhaps were presented in the staff report, and I appreciate the efforts by the GSAs, but there is, there are decades to happen before there's any impact in North County. The short version is, is North County, especially North County Coastal, is overdrafted, all of it. And for that reason, the, a deed restriction for water conservation fixtures is essential. Otherwise, it is foreseeable that the same owner or future owners can simply swap out or develop their fixtures, or develop new structures with new water fixtures that do not meet conservation requirements. Now, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District has done these deed restrictions for years, and it's probably a large reason for their success, and it's the only way to enforce the restrictions and to low, to rely on low water use going forward. Now, the cost of the deed restriction would be borne by the county, just as the Water Management District does. It's a standard form, and the county records it at no cost to the county. This is an essential step if, for allowing these additional water fixtures in North County because the situation is truly so dire. And the current commissioners may or may not know about the situation in Granite Ridge, where people, for years, trucked in water. Margie K. would have the more current information. I also want to talk about briefly that the ADUs in North County Coastal should be considered and included in the North County LUP build-out figures. ADUs and JADUs may be utilized towards the Rena and Housing Element numbers. Now, staff vaguely referenced earlier when questioned that there's some state law that says ADU should, may, do not necessarily have to be counted in build-out, but there's been no discussion or specific reference to that specific state law, which I asked staff for, and why would not apply in this case in the particular circumstances of North County? Because it should apply, and ADUs should be counted. Finally, as to the issue of existing versus proposed structures, this is some language that staff earlier said that it would work out before it went on to the board. I really don't think that's a wise approach. This is a policy determination that is appropriate for this commission to discuss and to give direction on. This is not something that the staff should work out and make policy decisions on. As drafted, the language about existing structures versus proposed structures would present enormous loopholes for foreseeable abuse, with staff's hands being tied due to the vague terms in the current language, and with severe unintended consequences. For example, if a structure is built next year, or the year after, or in three years, then at that point, would it count?
I need for you to wrap up, Ms. Erickson.
Thank you. You know, on my screen, it doesn't show, did not show a timeframe, so I appreciate it. That is my final comment, is to consider, and this board should address the issue of existing versus proposed as a policy issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Jessica A.
Hello, my name is Jessica Yala, rural North Monterey County, address 325 Mayher Road. I happen to live in the, that sweet spot in Monterey County where I'm actually under the Pahoe Valley basin, but since my water system falls in the Salinas Valley water basin. And as we heard earlier, I had called the Pahoe Valley and inquired about their water restrictions or limitations of any sorts, and they do not. They're having, in fact, they don't have a moratorium on accessory dwellings. And I know that in Pahoe, that they're building, out in San Juan Road, I believe, a 54-unit apartment complex out there. I apologize, I don't know the name of it off the top of my head. But this housing is very needed in this, in this area. We're underserved, and it is imperative that we have this for generations to come. Now, a lot of these regulations and policies that are presented reflect our neighboring counties, except our neighboring counties have 1,200 square feet. I feel that it is appropriate to be treated equally and fairly as our neighboring counties. We all have, you know, a very, very good understanding of the water concerns. I'm really not prepared, I didn't have my house in front of me, but please consider it. It is a great asset to the community and to North Monterey County that has been held under this umbrella hostage for 30 years. under this umbrella hostage for 30 years. Thank you.
And thank you, Madam Clerk.
Call-in user one.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Oh yes, hello, my name is Jeannie Ford, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak on this. And thank you to all parties for the caring and in-depth conversation today, and I know it's been going on for years, and the amount of detail that you are all balancing is remarkable, and I just greatly appreciate what you are doing. I had a couple of comments. One is that I did not see any, I'm speaking to the Big Sur Land Use Plan, it's the only area that I'm personally familiar with, so I didn't see any reference to limitations of how many ADUs or JADUs would be available to develop on a parcel. It looks like with the, the plan that's being revised, there was initially a limit of only 50 dwellings or ADUs within the Big Sur Land Use Plan, but that was redlined. It's number three on the amendments to the Big Sur Coast Land Use Plan on Exhibit F. But that up to 50 was redlined, so I would like to see some sort of limitation, say one ADU and JDU per parcel, or something along those lines, because it could be, you know, it could be abused. And then also, the ADUs and JADUs in the Big Sur Land Use Area were supported by the community directly in reference to the loss of, of community housing and workforce housing. So I'm hoping that with the adoption of this ADU and JADU new allowances, that, that the workforce housing conversation is taken off of the table for this current revision on the land use plan in the Big Sur area. It would be redundant, and I think it would, I think that would, should be off the table. And, and then finally, the, the, one of the situations in, in Big Sur is, of course, the very wealthy homeowners coming in, and then they really don't want anybody on their property, so if, if, while they're not there, in some cases. And while an ADU and JD, JADU should be obviously available to all parcel property owners, maybe there could be some sort of tax incentive or something that would encourage them to have a caretaker. Historically, caretakers were part of the landscape, and the homeowners that didn't live full-time on their properties would have a caretaker. Maybe there could be some sort of incentive to having a caretaker in one of those ADUs or JADUs that would also be a community member. And, and then I also feel that if there's any way to streamline this permit process... Okay, thank you. The streamlining of the permit process and reducing fees of these permits would be, I think, highly beneficial to, so that these can actually, you know, do what they're proposed to do.
Thank you, we appreciate that. All right, Madam Clerk, is there anyone else?
Erin Wilson?
Ms. Wilson?
Yeah, hi. Actually, Jeannie Ford just pretty much took all the words out of my mouth. I'm, I am hoping that there could be some way, because we do need housing for our workforce and our locals, if there could be some incentive for those folks who might not want anybody on their property, but have plenty of room for an ADU, because that would be helpful. And it would also help if we had that kind of incentive, so that people would not use them for vacation rentals, because as we know, they'll make a fortune in vacation rentals if they can do that without enforcement. But if they get some sort of incentive for renting to a work first person, or a local, they might not be so inclined to illegally use them as vacation rentals. I also am interested in how many of these ADUs and JADUs will be allowed in Big Sur, not only in Big Sur proper, but on each particular parcel of property. And lastly, enforcement is the key to anything working in Big Sur. We may not be able to have one single person assigned to Big Sur, but if we could have some method by which we could communicate with some, somebody on enforcement issues, that would be really helpful, because unfortunately, that's been a big problem in Big Sur, as I'm sure you know, as being a Big Sur resident. Thank you.
And thank you. Madam Clerk, anybody else?
There are no additional hands up on Zoom and no emails in our inbox.
Thank you. That being the case, I'm going to go ahead and conclude the public portion of the program and come back to staff to address any issues you may have heard in public comments. Staff?
Yeah, I'd like to address the suggestion to incorporate an enforceable deed restriction on the properties for, to ensure long-term compliance. While we acknowledge that the suggestion, we don't believe it's the appropriate approach. The Monterey, the way that the Monterey Peninsula Water District enforces the water restrictions on properties is that they track the fixture counts and issue permits based on the inspection of the property, and they don't place simply a deed restriction on the property. And I do want to mention that there is other mechanisms in place within our county regulations that require, for example, upon change of ownership of a property, that the seller submit a water conservation certification to the Water Resources Agency. The second point I'd like to address is the unit count in the Big Sur. This essentially state code nullified the unit count for general, that is required in the general plan. In the ordinance, there is however, a limitation on the number of units allowed on parcels, for example, one ADU and one JADU. And there is certain exceptions where there is multiple family dwellings on the lot. So, yeah.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Moretti?
Yeah, just a couple more. So, just in terms of the question around, the suggestion around existing versus proposed, the specific suggestion actually in that letter from Ms. Erickson, I believe, was to establish a date of existing. Staff did look, we did consider that, we actually had that conversation ourselves a while back. State law does not establish a timeline for existing dwelling. As we consider that internally, whether one, it would be appropriate if we could, or if that would be contrary to state law, we would have to explore that if it's something that the commission desired. But more importantly, while there could be concerns for individuals who look to work the system, perhaps want to build a new, new unit, max it out, and then come back and take advantage of state law, while that's a possibility, on the flip side, there are individuals who may move into a house that is built, constructed new two years ago, you know, five years ago, and that family who comes into the house is looking to expand their family in another three years. And so, on that flip side, for truly making sure that there's the opportunity to increase housing density and allow for JADUs and ADUs, staff just felt like both the intent of state law and the intent for ours would be not to limit and establish a prior, a timeline for what existing. But again, should that be something the commission wishes us to look into, we would work with county council to see whether or not we could do that for consistency with state law. The other, just a couple of points, because it did come up, and I just wanted, for the public who's listening, the questions and concerns around enforcement, in particular around whether or not these accessory units, dwelling units, would be potentially utilized as short-term or vacation rentals. Really, that is an active discussion that we've had through our vacation rental ordinance adoption and the subsequent program for enforcement that we're looking to put in place. So I really encourage folks, that's really the inappropriate location to continue to emphasize the importance and the prioritization of also ensuring that these units are not, and I did just want to alert the commission and individuals that we do have an item going to the board on, for a discussion around the vacation rental ordinances, an update in December. So individuals, if they are not yet on our public distribution list for vacation rentals, please reach out to our county staff and our webpage to request to be added, so that you can follow that, because we also will be moving forward in January to the board with consideration of our, with a discussion and consideration around funding and staffing resources required for implementation enforcement of those regulations. In addition, there was, were a number of commenters who discussed potential incentive programs, ways to really help ensure that ADUs and JADUs provide housing, and housing for people who live and work, wanted to really say, well, these regulations don't address that. We're having very active conversations around our housing element and implementing our housing element. I think that's really an appropriate space. We do have, we do recognize and have a number of policies around encouraging and looking at opportunities to create incentives for ADUs, JADUs, and so again, just sort of directing folks in those comments as well to remain active in those conversations. And we're happy to respond to anything else if the commission wishes.
Thank you, staff. I would just start by saying, I believe that one of the efforts in the Big Sur Land Use Plan involves a minimum rental period for ADUs. Is that still there?
Yes, in the Big Sur, the 90-day period is still within the land use plan.
I know we had discussed that as another way that we could, in this setting, encourage providing of long-term housing rather than short-term visitor housing. Okay, all right, Commissioners, any questions for staff or comments or want to do anything? Commissioner Mendoza?
Just briefly, are the short-term rental for, for ADUs or junior ADUs, could that be like a condition of approval that, and also make it a deed restriction, would that would not be a possibility?
Let the staff answer, but my reading was that, that ADUs are not allowed to be short-term rentals now, at all. But, you know, the rubber meeting the road, I bow to your...
I'm just thinking if it's a deed restriction, then at that point, you know, it cannot be, it is what it is, you know?
Staff appears to be thinking. Yeah. We encourage thinking in this platform.
Yeah, so generally, if something is codified within county code, that's not something that we add an additional condition of approval, that we would necessarily memorialize.
One other risk you run with that is if already, it's memorialized in the code and then it changes, then you'd have these deed restrictions on title, and we'd have to go about removing them. So it adds that complexity as well. But currently, as written, the ordinance in the coastal zone would not allow short-term rentals in ADUs, and it's current law now in inland, because that doesn't have to be certified, that ADUs can't be short-term rentals.
On the flip side, if the ordinance changed and you had a deed restriction, you still couldn't do it, so that might be a further protection if we're concerned about future changes in the, in the law. Commissioner Daniels?
Thank you. I, I think I have some more questions, but I, I wanted to just start with some comments, because we've heard a lot about one region, which is North County, where there seems to be a real desire for, for the opportunity to build ADUs, and a real concern about the water supply and the stress on the basins. And, you know, one of the things we haven't talked about, which I believe I read in the staff report, which is the primary stresser to the water supply into basins is agriculture. And so, we're having this conversation about a relatively small impact when you look at the big picture, which is the addition of, of ADUs. And based on the conversation that we've had here today, the path forward for building ADUs isn't particularly easy or inexpensive. And so, I think that the, the number of units that we're really talking about is negligible when we think about what is really impacting the water supply, which is a much larger usage, not, not a residential potable use, domestic use. And so, I think that's an important context. And I also think it's really important to remember, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the idea behind the ADU state legislation is that we need to add stock. We have a huge housing crisis, and homelessness is at numbers I don't think we've ever seen in Monterey County, and in our school districts, and in our senior populations. And so, this idea is that by adding stock through this mechanism, we, we will ultimately both provide housing, and if we're really successful, drive the cost of housing down because we have more units. And so, I, I really think we need to embrace what this state law is, has set out to do, which is provide opportunities for, for building housing. On the 1,000-square-foot versus 1,200-square-foot conversation, you know, neither size is a huge home. You could definitely make a luxury 1,200-square-foot home that goes for a lot of money. It's a little bit harder to do with a 1,000-square-foot home, so I think the idea of, of making it 1,000-square-foot, even though staff said it's about water and the opportunity to produce another bathroom, it also reduces the opportunity to, to, to create a more expensive unit. But that said, the difference, I'm not, I'm not going to die on that hill for sure, but I think that's another consideration, is that the smaller the maximum size, the more opportunity to have something that's affordable by design. And in regards to the build-out of the North County Land Use Plan, you know, I don't know what that number is, so we're, we're, we're having a conversation about something that is, I, I don't know what, what that means in terms of, you know, are we close to build-out in North County? If we were to consider the requests that came in from, from public comment to include these units in the build-out figures, what, what does that mean? Is there, is there a lot of room there, or would it mean we're actually hampering the opportunity for, 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 for housing development in, in North County? And I think I'll just leave my, my comments there. I think that, that somewhat sums it up, and that's what I got. Thanks.
I think staff is conferring on your, your most, your last question.
Yeah, so I think just, points noted, and the one thing in, with regards to the build-out, so, so we were actually just trying to look and make sure we could give you an accurate number of what that build-out number is. We believe it's approximately 9,000.
Microphone, please.
Approximately 9,000, and Mr. Sanchez is going to verify that. So it's a fairly large number. And staff, we actually are in the process of updating our records and calculating where we are out towards build-out, but we do have substantial capacity towards that build-out number, and so we are not anticipating in the near future that we would run into any types of concerns, whether or not these counted towards build-out of reaching that. And, but we are happy to get more refined numbers, but we don't have those precise count numbers at the moment.
Then I would just add through the chair that, that is something, you know, to definitely consider, is, is in this case, in this, in this area where we have these resource constraints, considering including the, including ADUs in the, in the future build-out, and especially if we go toward 1,200-square-foot homes, which is a, a normal-sized house in my book for a normal-sized family. That's a substantial-sized home. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands up. I, I would just like to associate myself with those remarks. I think that if the build-out doesn't put us up against the wall right now, would, I think it's more accurate, if we're going to count them for RENA, we ought to count them towards the cap, just for consistency's sake, if it's allowed under state law. But again, I don't, I'm looking at that as more conceptual thing, and certainly not in my mind intending to limit the available housing production, and I... And I would also concur with the idea of changing the limited size in North County to 1,200. I wouldn't support that in Big Sur for the reasons that Commissioner Daniels has articulated. The, the opportunity to build luxury 1,000-square-foot homes is already pretty significant in Big Sur. And then you add that extra 200 feet, it actually does make a difference there. So we originally talked about limiting, because of the resource constraints in this case, not only the physical ones for water and septic, but also for the viewshed protection, limiting those to 800 square feet. But state law brought us up to 1,000 due to the exemption language. So I would support it in the case of North County. I personally would not support it in the case of Big Sur. I would like to move, the, the final comment I'm going to make has to do with staff further explaining their request to defer the discussion of the existing structures language to prior to the, to the board, because I would only be comfortable doing that if I'm very clear on the goals of that revision prior to making them. So in other words, the, the public comment about the policy piece, I would want to make sure we, we address that here. But before we do that, I'm going to make kind of a random and probably off-the-wall comment here, which is relating to the need to try to facilitate the production of these units, because I think we see universal agreement on the board and probably with public comment that we need them. In the past, Monterey County had a position in the HCD or equivalent that was called the ombuds person. That person was the person who answered the phone and helped you figure out when you had an issue, who to talk to, and I think paid for itself many times over. That person who did that was the universal concierge, was able to clarify questions around, obvious questions about regulations, so they didn't get lost in, in the process. And to help individuals who are doing it for the first time deal with questions that may have been brought up by professional design consultants, that they don't have that information. In other words, you hire somebody, they tell you something, you don't know whether that's really the truth. You could talk to a person who would, who's knowledgeable and who was working in the public interest. It seems to me that the consideration of an, of an ADU ombuds person might be a really good investment in facilitating the process without, within the, the context of the actual ordinances. And I know it's, it's a stretch. I know it's a long shot. I really, I can't tell you how much easier it made my feeling about what I do to have that general ombuds person. In the particular question of providing this, we have for larger housing projects, we have the whole housing department that helps you with that. If you're a developer and you come in and you want to do a housing project, you can talk to the housing people and they will help you. In this case, actually, individuals kind of need it more because they're not professionals in the field. And we're going to try to, to make sure that we have a wider base of folks doing things and they're doing it for the first time. Just want to throw that in there. But then I want to go back to have staff explain to me what they are considering doing with the updating the existing structures language that they proposed to do prior to taking the, the ordinance to the board.
Yeah, if I may, through the chair, so just to be clear, staff is not recommending making any changes and establishing any form of existing structured date. Staff, if, should the commission wish us to look into that, then we would look for clear policy direction of the intent, but we would have to, what my point is, before we would incorporate that policy intent, we would have to work with county council to verify if we could incorporate a date and still be consistent with state law. So staff is not recommending any changes. It would only be should the commission wish us to investigate or incorporate changes.
Thank you. That helps my understanding. I was off track. I appreciate it. Commissioners? Comments, suggestions?
Through the chair, if I may clarify some of the build-out questions that there was.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So our, our maximum 100% build-out would be the 9,240 units. The current policy limits it to the 50%. 50% build-out until definitive water studies have been established. And currently, we're still under the, well under the 50% as of our understanding, our data. And I, I think I'd like to bring up a perspective that Commissioner Daniels brought up, which is the level of impact for ADUs. And through our housing, housing annual reporting, we have data that's, shows the, the number of ADUs that have been developed from the previous housing element cycle through 2015 to 2023. And that number is around 187 units over an eight-year period.
County-wide or in North County?
County-wide.
Thank you.
And I think that offers some perspective on the level of impact compared to agriculture.
Unincorporated county, that is?
Unincorporated county.
Thank you. Commissioner Gomez?
If the commissioners are prepared, I'm ready to make a motion. I'll, I'll move staff recommendations with the two suggestions that were brought up. One was brought up by Commissioner Deal that relates to adopting language that is consistent with state law. That way you don't have to modify our recommendations later. And the second one dealt with square footage, increasing it to 1,200. That's correct.
In North County?
North County.
Okay, there's been a motion on the floor by Commissioner Gomez. Is there a second? Commissioner Mendoza seconds that. Commissioner Daniels, you had a question?
Yes, my question to the maker of the motion is, with the information that we just heard regarding the 9,000-unit build-out and the prohibition at 50% and us being well under the 50%, is there an interest by the commission in including the ADUs in the build-out figure for North County?
I don't believe so because of, of the fact they would affect the, the, just the availability of housing in general, I think, long-term in that area.
Okay, so the motion, motion maker has declined that suggestion. The motion stands and the motion by Commissioner Gomez and suggest, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, is to adopt staff's recommendation with the two amendments as outlined. Is staff clear on that? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to go, oh, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Thank you. And I don't know if staff had one other recommendation. I'm not quite sure if there was another piece to that.
To be clear, there were, in the public comment letter, there were a couple of items that were really just clarifications in terms of language, so not policy, but just clarifications for accuracy that staff will also review and, but none of it is substantive policy. But that was the other, other piece.
Any objection from the maker of the motion and the second, that that is understood? I'm seeing nods, nods on both sides that that's, that's acceptable to them. And other than that, you'll have to speak to the maker of the motion. Commissioner Gonzalez, do you have something in specific you want them to consider?
I have.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Any abstentions? Seeing none, that motion carries. And we are forwarding our recommendation to the Board of Supervisors as discussed. Thank you very much. I really appreciate this discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now that moves us on to the next item in our agenda. And I'm going to ask the commissions indulges, because I have just learned recently that item number three on our agenda, which is PLN 190439, is being, a continuance has been requested by the applicant and staff supports that continuance. And since it's cos on to the lunch hour, I'm wondering if there'd be any objection to us taking the continuance discussion now? And if it is, turns out that we don't continue, I'm going to put it, trail it back to where it was. But if it does, then those people would be able to depart. Is there any problem with that? I don't see any objections. So I'm going to move to agenda item number three as just discussed, which is PLN 190439, which is, Ms. Garcia, Ms. Kanga, are you standing in for that today?
I am, Chair.
Thank you. Please take it away.
Thank you. Oh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Anna Kanga with HCD Planning, here to present on the Yan application. File number is PLN 190439. Yesterday, staff received correspondence from the applicant stating that they will not have any representation at today's hearing and therefore requested continuance. They did not identify a particular date. However, staff would be prepared to suggest a, the second hearing in January based on our tentative agendas. Staff also did not receive any confirmation that the applicant, agent, or owner has reviewed the conditions of approval and are agreeable to those conditions of approval. As such, staff does recommend a continuance of this item. However, should the Planning Commission want to open up the hearing, staff is prepared to make a presentation.
Thank you. That's very clear. Are there any technical questions for the staff? Is there anybody from the applicant's orbit who would like to speak online? We don't, we said there was nobody present. I'm not seeing any hands. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on the matter of the continuance of this item to, I think staff is recommending a date certain, which is the second hearing in January, whenever that, that is. I don't see anybody. Yep?
I did receive a public comment, but it's not on the continuance. We'll make that part of the public record and bring it forward.
Should the continuance pass, then we will not take that. We will certainly take it if we deal with the item. All right. Seeing no other public comment, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment here, period. Bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure? Commissioner Roberts?
I'd like to move staff's recommendation to continue this. And looking at the calendar, it looks like it's January 29th is the second meeting.
It's been moved by Commissioner Roberts to continue to a date certain of January the 29th, which is the second hearing in January. It looks like Commissioner Monsalve- Second. I think Commissioner Monsalve got her hand up first, but thank you. I appreciate that. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And that item is hereby continued. Thank you very much. I think that's an efficient use of time. And now we're going to move forward to item number two on today's agenda, which is the PLN 210174, the Era Energy LLC. And I believe, Ms. Jensen, are you going to, going to take this when you have the opportunity to get to the appropriate location? I see general approval radiating from her vicinity. So wait a minute while she gets organized and then we will move into that item.
Okay, good afternoon, Chair Deal and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Fiona Jensen, presenting the Meyer Rvid Trust application. HCD planning file number, PLN 210174. The project site is located at 66880 Sargent's Road, which is approximately five and a half miles south of San Ardo within the South County area plan. The property is zoned heavy industrial with a mineral extraction land use designation. In 1949, the County of Monterey Planning Commission approved a use permit to allow an oil company to explore, drill, and remove oil and gas on approximately 22,000 acres of land, including the subject property. By the 1950s, the surrounding area was gradually developed into what is now known as the San Ardo Oil Fields. Up until 2010, the site in the immediate vicinity contained approximately or over 100 active oil and gas wells, pipelines, access roads, and related infrastructure. In 2013, oil and gas facilities were removed and closure of Faruni Flats was completed by the well operator, Era Energy, and their remedial contractor. The closure included bulk removal of oil-impacted soils and re-grading of the project site, abandonment of all oils within the project site. The surrounding area does still contain active or idle oil wells. As proposed, the project involves a general development plan and a combined development permit to allow the construction of a 35-and-a-half-acre solar photovoltaic facility and associated site improvements, including solar modular blocks, electrical collection lines, service roads, and perimeter fencing. Implementation of the proposed project would require approximately 5,000 square feet of development on slopes in excess of 25%. Era Energy's existing oil field and associated facilities demand approximately nine megawatts of electricity. Pacific Gas and Electric Company currently supplies this electricity. The proposed private solar facility is intended to support the renewable energy initiatives of the State of California, specifically to reduce the need for imported power. The 23,000 solar panels would convert solar energy into enough electricity to fully offset Era Energy's electrical demand. The generated power would be routed from the proposed facility to an existing power line, which then connects to Era Energy's operated, in operation substation. The energy generated from the solar panels would then be routed to three central inverters and converted from direct current to alternating current. Three medium-voltage transformers would then increase the voltage from 600 volts to 12.5 kilovolts. The generated solar power would be used solely at the Era Energy oil field and would be consumed on-site. Should excess energy be generated on a consistent basis, there is an interconnection agreement in place that allows for additional electricity to be placed back into the grid. However, this is not the intent of the applicant and they would instead remove the unnecessary solar panels or decrease the capacity of a portion, thus reducing the total generated energy. A draft general development plan has been prepared for the proposed project and it details the four major project components, including construction, applicant-proposed environmental measures and design features, operations and maintenance, and decommissioning. The applicant has incorporated various minimization and avoidance measures into the GDP that address potential impacts to biological resources, water quality, air quality, and the potential exposure of valley fever. These measures have been incorporated into conditions of approval and draft mitigation measures and are addressed later in this presentation. Once the project is constructed, it would be in operation for up to 35 years. And at the end of the project's useful lifetime, the facility would be decommissioned and the site would be restored to current conditions. As previously mentioned, the project site was supported oil operations and has since undergone vast amounts of grading and has been partially developed. Various biological reports have been prepared to determine the presence of special status plants, animals, and habitat. The project biologist determined the implementation of the proposed project, which involves construction and decommissioning activities, has the potential to impact five special status animals and/or their habitat, including the American Badger, Coast-Horned Lizard, Western Spadefoot, Salinas Pocket Mouse, and the Burrowing Owl. Mitigation measure Bio-1 has been applied to reduce this potentially significant impact to a level less than significant. This mitigation measure requires the applicant to enter into a contract with a qualified biologist to prepare and implement a biological education program for employees, monitor initial ground disturbing and trenching activities, and conduct pre-construction and pre-decommissioning surveys. Several avian species of concern have, also have the potential to occupy nearby trees. Though no trees are proposed for removal, condition number six has been applied to require compliance with the migratory bird treaty act and the Bald and Gold Eagle Protection Act, which prohibit the disruption of raptors and migratory birds and/or their nests. Further, as detailed in the draft general development plan, the proposed security fencing would incorporate design measures that increases the fencing, fencing's visibility to reduce the potential for wildlife entanglement. This design measure has been incorporated as condition number 17. Finally, the project has been designed with- Finally, the project has been designed with a 100-foot buffer from a wetland feature to avoid impacts to its habitat and water quality. Condition number 18 has been applied and requires installation of exclusionary fencing and fiber rolls along the 100-foot buffer, as shown on the right image. The subject property contains rolling hills and valleys containing slopes in excess of 25% and one large flat previously disturbed area. The selected project site utilizes this relatively flat area, however, portions of the project site do contain steeper slopes. The original project was designed with approximately 32,000 solar panels and approximately 10,000 square feet of development on slopes. However, the project has since been reduced to approximately 23,000 solar panels and 5,000 square feet of slopes or development on slopes in excess of 25%, and those areas are shown here in red. Relocating the 35 and 1/2 acre solar facility to another portion of the subject property would result in a greater amount of development on slopes, would threaten active or idle wells in the surrounding area, and would require additional ground disturbance to connect the existing substation, which, as cited, is immediately east of the project site. The designated location of the proposed development better achieves the goals and objectives of the 2010 general plan and the South County area plan by generating renewable electricity to fully offset an oil operations electrical demand and minimizing natural landform alteration. An underground utility survey was conducted earlier this year and detected and confirmed 65 abandoned oil and gas wells within the project site or just outside of the project limits. All wells were detected to have to be abandoned eight to 10 feet below grade. To ensure no impacts to these wells occur with construction, all cuts and fill within 15 feet of a wellhead would be to a minimum of, sorry, to a maximum depth of three feet. This is to ensure that there's a safe buffer above the abandoned wellhead. Reducing the below-grade wellhead depth to five to seven feet versus the existing eight to 10 feet would continue to be in compliance with state requirements. Further, at locations where an abandoned oil well is known to exist, only ballasted foundations would be installed and no piles would be driven into the ground within that 15-foot radius. This design approach ensures that no contact will or the implementation of the project would not come in contact with any of the abandoned oil wells. Though not anticipated, should there be an impact, there is a potential that toxic gases could be released and pose a hazard to construction workers or nearby occupants. Therefore, mitigation measure HM1 has been applied to require that the applicant prepare and implement an emergency action plan that contains emergency contact information, procedures to follow if toxic gases or other substances are released or exposed, construction crew safety zones, and remediation measures. The California Department of Conservation Geological Energy Management Division, also known as CalGem, establishes regulations for installing, maintaining, operating, and abandoning oil and gas wells. No matter the status of a well, CalGem categorically recommends against constructing over wells. However, should the local jurisdiction approve development over an active, idle, or abandoned oil and gas well, and should that well leak, CalGem regulations then dictate that all risk, liability, and cost associated with removing the development to access the well and then re-abandon or abandon it to today's standards is shifted from the state to the property owner, developer, and local jurisdiction who authorized the development. As previously described, the proposed solar facility would be constructed over approximately 65 abandoned oil wells. 20 of these wells were abandoned to 1980s and 1990s standards, while the remaining of the wells are abandoned to today's standards. CalGem has commented on the project and reiterate that they recommend against constructing over the wells, and additionally recommends that the project adhere to certain requirements, including recording a disclosure notice and disposing of any soils containing hydrocarbons. These comments were received late last week and following distribution of the draft initial study and also following distribution of today's staff report. Accordingly, they have not been considered or incorporated where appropriate as conditions of approval. CalGem has verbally commented that they are not too concerned with the project for multiple reasons, including its components are easier to remove and reinstall than, say, a house. The well operator is also the developer, so there would be limited conflict between parties should impacts occur. And the standards at which the wells were abandoned in at the 80s and 90s are similar to today's standards and require that specific plugs be installed to protect underground drinking water, so there are no active threats to water resources. Though the project has been designed to avoid impacts to underground wells, should a well be inadvertently impacted, mitigation measure HM1 also requires compliance with applicable CalGem Public Resource Code and California Code of Regulation sections. Further, this mitigation measure requires that the applicant enter into an agreement with the County of Monterey, explaining that the applicant, owner, and project operator are responsible for any costs associated with damaging or impacting on-site wells, including but not limited to the removal of solar panels or necessary equipment to access the well sites, re-abandonment of the impacted wells, and reinstallation of the solar panels, or any other activities involved. Implementation of mitigation measure HM1 and adherence to state requirements would ensure less than significant impacts occur relative to hazards and hazardous materials. Although the project site would occupy approximately 35 and 1/2 acres, only four and a half acres of grading would be required. The nearest sensitive receptor to the project site is approximately 0.7 miles northeast. The distance between the sensitive receptor and the project site is greater than the 500-foot screening distance recommended by the California Air Resources Board, thus indicating that potential toxic air contaminants would disperse enough to be below the health risk emission threshold. However, given the project's larger disturbance footprint, mitigation measures AQ 1, 2, and 3 have been applied. These mitigation measures require adherence to specific dust control practices, preparation and implementation of a construction staging management plan, and address vehicle emissions, the use of diesel vehicles, and idling. Ground disturbing activities occurring during extended periods of high heat or unusually windy conditions could increase fugitive dust and expose sensitive receptors or construction workers to San Joaquin Valley Fever. The California Department of Public Health establishes guidelines for reducing exposure to valley fever. Further, the California Labor Code requires employers provide specific effective valley fever awareness and preventive training for all construction employees in certain counties that are known to have prolonged dust exposure, which includes the County of Monterey. To ensure compliance with the California Department of Public Health's guidelines and the California Labor Code, condition number five has been applied to require preparation and implementation of a valley fever management plan. This valley fever management plan shall include a job hazards analysis, roles and responsibilities of construction personnel, a valley fever worker training program, dust suppression measures, and require that the construction crew are provided with National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health-approved half-face respirators with a minimum of N95 protection factor. The Monterey County Health Officer has reviewed the project and draft conditions and have no comments. The project site is not located near scenic highway or within an area designated as visually sensitive in the 2010 general plan. The surrounding landscape is dominated by rolling hills, oil rigs, rural residential properties, and dispersed vegetation. For limited timeframes, when traveling along Highway 101, the project components may be distantly visible but would not detract from the existing aesthetic. The solar panels would be approximately eight feet tall, designed with non-reflective coatings and angled to the south to limit visibility and glare. On February 16, 2022, the South County Land Use Advisory Committee reviewed the project and voted four to zero to support it as proposed, and raised one concern about potential visual impacts from Highway 1 and nearby residences. Here is a photo from northbound Highway 101 and its intersection with One Post Road. In June 2022, the County of Monterey prepared and distributed a draft initial study and negative declaration. During and following the public review period, the county received comments from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Salinan Tribe, CalGem, and a law firm. The public comment letters raised concerns about the adequacy of the document, potential impacts on biological resources, air quality, and on-site oil and gas wells, and the potential exposure of valley fever. To address the raised concerns and new information in the record, staff revised the draft initial study and circulated a draft mitigated negative declaration in September 2024. The draft ISMND identified potentially significant impacts on air quality, biological resources, hazards and hazardous materials, and tribal cultural resources. Six mitigation measures are proposed to reduce these identified potentially significant impacts to less than significant. During the public review period for the recirculated environmental document, CalGem commented on the project and requested additional time to research the status of each well and also provided general recommendations as required through their regulations. CalGem submitted additional comments last week, which disclosed the status of each well and made additional specific recommendations as discussed earlier in this presentation. Additionally, following the public review period of the recirculated mitigated negative declaration, the Salinan Tribe called county staff and requested tribal monitoring for all ground disturbance. As drafted, the environmental document does include mitigation measure TR 1, which requires that a tribal monitor observe all project-related grading and excavation. All other commenters on the 2022 draft initial study and negative declaration did not comment on the recirculated 2024 draft mitigated negative declaration, and their concerns are presumed to be resolved with adoption of the draft mitigation measures and draft conditions of approval should the commission decide. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt a mitigated negative declaration pursuant to secret guideline section 15074, approve a general development plan and combine development permit to allow construction of an 11-megawatt solar photovoltaic facility and associated site improvements, including development on slopes in excess of 25%, and adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. I think that gets us to a trifecta of excellent staff support today. I really appreciate the complete and efficient presentation. Are there any technical questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Roberts?
I have two questions. One is, years ago, we approved a solar facility, I believe somewhere in South County, and I'm wondering if this is anywhere near that.
I do not know the specific location, but that was the CalFlats project. It is multiple miles south of the project and significantly larger than the one proposed today.
Thank you. The second question, then, I guess, is for council and/or staff about the letter that we've received that staff mentioned they haven't been able to address. Just wondering how we should deal with that.
Yeah, I think CalGem's brought up some issues in the letter that was sent on Friday the 8th that I would like to think through and maybe change some of the proposed conditions before the commission. I don't know that doing them on the fly today is the best idea, so I'd like a little bit more time with this, if possible.
To follow up, I guess that was my question, because looking through, there are some kind of significant things that should be addressed, and so I didn't know as a body what we should be doing until then.
So to clarify, council's recommendation would be for continuance?
Yes, correct. Sorry, I should have said that outright.
Yeah, based on the public comment?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any further questions, technical questions of staff? I'm going to just, whether we, we'll talk about the continuance here. I want to give the applicant an opportunity to at least speak on that matter. If it's a staff recommendation, we should certainly take it up. To say that should this come back to us, I would really like to see some elaboration on the evidence for the slope use permit. I think one L, evidence one L, is pretty brief, but the slide was very complete. If we could actually take some of that information from, I think it was slide seven, and provide some specifics on that evidence, I would appreciate that going forward. All right. So what does the commission think about the request for continuance? If we were, we'll listen to the applicant, see what the applicant has to say, and then go from there? All right. And open the public hearing and invite the applicant to come forward and talk to us, starting with the suggestion for continuance to address the matters brought up. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. My name is Andrew Cochran. I'm our Director of Regulatory Affairs at California Resources Corporation, representing Era today. With regards to the continuance, we're willing to, our technical staff has gone through and reviewed CalGem's comments each well. We can review those with the commission if you'd like as well. Our initial takeaway is that there is no additional threat based off their analysis and based off of ours. This is generic language that CalGem has adopted recently. They addressed, I believe, three separate sections, one being hydrocarbon zones not being plugged to standard. That can mean multiple things, but it does not mean that there's not isolation between a hydrocarbon zone and freshwater bodies above. Hole fluid not being to current standards is 1723B. Okay. Yeah, sorry about that. That is something that we've addressed. We have adequate mud weight. We have actually willing to offer all the abandonment letters for these wells that were issued at the time of abandonment and/or 2013 to 2014 review. If you guys would like these, we have these as well. But the mud weight that was used in old abandements was designed to have a weight that would protect any zones in these oil and gas wells. It's also designed to have a thickness so that fluid cannot migrate through those. So that's why it was an accepted practice back in the day. It's similar to a cement. And then I believe the last one was freshwater protection, not to current standards. Again, the statutes have not changed from CalGem's perspective, but we do have isolation with cement and/or mud properties across those zones that we believe is adequate for isolation.
So I'm hearing that to say that you don't think that there are substantive issues. Would you be willing to work with staff on the technical language to address that letter in the continuance if we would have it? What kind of a timeframe would, from your perspective, be appropriate for that? I know staff has its own other priorities, but...
I mean, our technical team has already reviewed each well, so we could turn that around pretty quickly.
Right. Thank you. Is there anybody, you want to ask the applicant a question?
I don't know that it's a question so much as, I mean, I just read this letter yesterday, the one they sent on November 8th, but it seems like they're requesting but not requiring specific information about certain wells going on title so that subsequent owners are on notice that certain wells aren't up to current standards. And then there is a mention of hydrocarbon being properly disposed of. So I don't know if there's testing, I'm assuming yes, that goes along with that, but some of those issues they specifically highlighted, and I want to make sure our resolution properly covers those issues, which it currently does not.
Understood. So to address maybe the second point first, the soil with hydrocarbons, that was previously done in our 2013, 2014 restoration of the area. So that's just kind of a generic thing that they put in their letters like this to make sure that future owners understand that if something were to happen, the soil would need to be remediated. On the future property owners, what that's doing is basically making sure that everyone in the chain of title understands the liability. So if I could give an example, if we were to ever sell this to a different owner, then we would still be in that chain of title. We would still own the liability if something would happen to them financially. But that's generic, again, language that we've seen recently from CalGem.
Well, we can work with you to make sure that those issues are covered through conditions so the county is protected.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. If we need to get into further substance, we'll give you another opportunity to do so. I'm going to go ahead and invite anybody else in the chambers who would like to speak on this matter, come forward and do so. And right now, we're talking about whether to proceed with the hearing right now or to allow staff to go back and complete the paperwork to address the letter that we received. So you're welcome to come forward and speak your piece. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Brian Shields, and I'm a field representative with Carpenter's Local 646. You might be asking why the Carpenters are standing up here about a photovoltaic installation, but we represent pile driving as well as welding. A lot of what goes into actually doing this project... A lot of the, what goes into actually doing this project falls underneath the carpenter's umbrella. I don't want to abuse your mic and speak here for too long, but I'm not speaking about whether it should be continued or not. I just had the opportunity to meet with the development team here recently, I mean, in the chambers here, introduce myself, and they did say that they'd be willing to sit down and talk with us. The, the thing about a project like this is that it provides family-sustaining jobs with healthcare and, and all of the above. So hopefully, we can get to that place, and thank you for your time.
You're welcome to speak for any three minutes you want, sir. Anyone else? Please come on down. Seeing no one in the chambers, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody remotely?
There are no additional emails and no hands up on Zoom.
All right. That being the case, I'm going to bring, close the public hearing for the time being and come back to the commission on the question of whether or not to continue this item as recommended by staff. Commissioners? Commissioner Daniels?
What does the turnaround, what does the timeline look like for staff to connect with the applicant and do this work?
As of right now, staff is targeting the January 8th, 2025 hearing, and the applicant has agreed to that.
Commissioner Monsalve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does that give council the time to review?
Yeah, that should be adequate.
Thank you.
All right.
Is it chair?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification. The commission didn't mention working with the applicant as well as modifying a condition or modifying the evidence for the use permit for slopes. And staff was just wondering if there were any other concerns or anything that we could also address in the resolution prior to returning.
Anybody? I see shaking their heads to my right. I see shaking their heads to my left, so I think that was, that's it. Pretty good report card. Is there anybody willing to make a motion? Mr. Commissioner Work?
Yes, I would like to move PLN 210174, staff's recommendation to a date certain of January 8th. Continuance?
Move, continuance been moved. Commissioner Getzelman, are you?
I'm gonna second that, thank you.
Very well. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, no? And that motion carries. And I just want to go on the record to say that I don't feel this continuance has anything to do with anybody not doing their job, because sometimes staff continuances are about that. This one, in my view, certainly is not. All right. That brings us to the, I'm gonna, and I know it's a little after lunch, but I'm just gonna forge ahead anyway to other matters. Madam Secretary, do we have any other matters? Do we have a department report? Those are two things you would know about.
In my mind, there are no other matters, and I do not have any set items that I had intended to present today, though I do see Commissioner Daniels suggesting there could be some other items or questions of the department.
Just if you had any response to this morning's request about Carmel Valley Road?
Two things. One, thank you, Director Spencer. He did remind me that we have the housing element. Notice of preparation for the programmatic environmental impact report. That is available for comment through November 20th, so that is available for public comment right now and can be found on our website. Let me see. Director Ishi was not available. And I'll look, Ms. Kanga, were we able to get Enrique available? Thank you.
Yes, through the chair. Unfortunately, public work staff was not available, but they did provide us with communications that were sent out, I believe, Friday. So based on those communications, the work is scheduled to occur between November 12th and November 26th, and they are, assuming that all work would be complete prior to the start of December.
So this could just, through the chair, be an easy fix, because I drove the road just this morning, and the flashing lights at two different locations say that the traffic, that the road construction will go through December 22nd. And that's what visitors see, and that's the concern.
Ms. Donlin, are you leaning forward?
Yeah, I was gonna ask Ms. Beretti, along the lines of the housing element, I believe we're expecting state HCD's comments back on the element any day now for their first review of the housing element?
That is correct. The first review comments that we're expecting from state housing community development will be to us by or before November 19th, so it aligns nicely with the close of the notice of preparation, scoping for the environmental impact report. Just looking forward, we have been looking to, we do anticipate coming to the planning commission per your request and referral for a brief update, status update on housing element, and next steps and public opportunities for input. It's looking like January we would be bringing that forward. We also have tentatively scheduled to go to the Board of Supervisors in January or February to give a status update and to address any policy issues that may arise out of the comments and consideration.
Okay, sounds like progress. Was anybody else over there leaning forward? I don't see anybody. That being the case, I am going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 12:12. Thank you, everybody.